And I'd like to start by welcoming some of our visitors that we have here. I know Dennis is here, Dennis Falter, is here with us. He's the Hanover County Attorney and responsible for Pamukki Regional Library legally, even though we can go to our legal councils in the different counties, but Dennis is the legal director. Jim Taylor is here, and Jim is our Hanover Assistant County Administrator, and Pamukki Regional Library is in his purview. He's the person we go to for that. We also have Ryan Hudson, and Ryan Hudson is a new member of the Hanover County Board of Supervisors for the Mechanicsville District, so we're glad to have you here. And Angela Baxter, and Angela Baxter is the internal auditor for Hanover. Are there any other, I don't want to call you dignitaries, dignitaries, who are present today? Would any of you have anything you'd like to share with us at this point? Is anybody?
Let me say a few words.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As was said, I'm Ryan Hudson, and I came here this morning to help lay some, put some things to rest, but also to show my support for this board. As you all have been told, it's on tape, which is kind of an old word of saying it, that Ryan Hudson, when he was a candidate, said that he wanted, that I wanted, to remove Hanover County from the Pamukki Regional Library Board. I possess the same document that I'm happy to send to you if you would like. However, on June 20th, Tuesday, June 20th, myself and two others defeated incumbents and won our primary races, and at that point, that put some things in motion, really across the Pamukki Regional Library Board. And some things, we got some things put in motion, like the reorganization and restructuring of the library board, which hadn't been looked at in almost a generation. So things start to head in the proper direction. This board itself begins to step up and understand the authority that is in their purview, given to you by state code. So while what I said in, whatever it was, May or June, I meant what I said, how I am now at a point where that because of the things that this board and the other policy boards, Board of Supervisors across the regional library board program are doing to help you all have a better understanding of what your role is, I believe that things are headed in the proper direction. So since the June primary, I think maybe I have been engaged three or four times total. The last were in the, about the last 48 hours. But other than that, in Hanover County, there has been zero discussion to remove us from the Pamukki Regional Library Board. So everyone can put that to rest, and if it is under my purview in the future, that something should arise, I'll be happy to let you know. But I am excited about the work that you all have ahead of you, and as I would say, I know that you all are headed in the proper direction for the good of everyone, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else who would, of the dignitaries, who would like to make a statement? Okay. In that case, then we will go to the consideration of agenda, the agenda items. And I have one item on the agenda that I would like to move. Currently, the reconsideration request that had come in this last month is on the consent agenda. I would like to move that to the Director's Report. So I think that needs to be under the Director's Report, so that we have time to discuss if And are there any other changes that would need to be done to the agenda? If not, I'd like to have a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Okay, sure. And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? So the agenda has been accepted with the change. It is now our time for citizens' time. We want to thank you all for being here. We appreciate your interest, we appreciate your input, and we do listen. I do want you to understand that. I want to remind you that each person has three minutes. We don't do any of the seated time to others, so you have three minutes total. And please remember that your comments should be directed to the entire board, not a specific board member, not a specific staff member, so that they, please keep them to the whole board. All right, and do I have some sheets? Oh, got it, great. Thank you. All right. We will start with Mary Crook from Goochlin.
On the agenda today is a review of library policies, so let's review two policies that are foundational to public libraries in America. First, the public library is for all people. The word "public" means relating to all the people in a county or community. Public library literally means library for all. It is the library's responsibility to serve all people, and it's the board's responsibility to support that, to ensure that all viewpoints are included. You might not like trans people, or gay people, or parents who want their kids to read about that stuff, but guess what? The library has to serve them. Second, those in charge of running libraries should be trained in library sciences. The board is obviously full of very smart people who work hard and want, and have life experience and want to do good. That's great. But all of that still doesn't make you more expert in libraries than a librarian. Extending board oversight to review books is a waste of taxpayer funds, because the experts already do that. Publishers label books according to age range, genre, and topic. If they mislabeled them, they would lose countless readers and dollars. They would go bankrupt. The idea that they would do it wrong on purpose is absurd. Librarians then order books based on their graduate-level expertise in book data, readership, and unbiased policy. They would never put porn on shelves, because that is illegal. Librarians do not operate in opinion, they operate in fact, data, and law. When you allow non-librarian opinion to determine your library collection, you end up with empty shelves and taxpayer money drained. There are examples across the U.S. Citizens of Warren County, Virginia, lost hundreds of thousands in funding last year because of books restriction demands. It has cost those citizens over $100,000 so far. Virginia Beach citizens had to pay for a court battle that found that restricting access to books before they're even purchased for the library is unconstitutional. And it costs more than money. In Florida, hundreds of books, including the dictionary, have been removed from library shelves thanks to opinion-guiding collections instead of librarians. Can you imagine if our children weren't allowed access to knowledge like that? Actually, you don't have to imagine. Hanover County School Board pulled books from its high school shelves that are on the college AP exam. That's right, if your kid goes to a Hanover school and wants to go to a great college, sorry for your luck. No matter how carefully you try to apply restrictions, the final result is always the same. When censorship wins, citizens lose money, knowledge, and power, and our children pay dearly for it. This board takes a lot, talks a lot about transparency. If you choose to move forward with, excuse me, forward with censorship, I expect you to be transparent to citizens about how you chose to waste enormous amounts of county resources for an unnecessary book policy that strips away opportunity from our children. Y'all keep saying you're not banning books, but we've seen the PowerPoints, we hear your comments, we see the kind of people that support you, we know how some of you feel about public libraries. Censorship is not just banning books, it's putting any measures in place that make it more difficult for patrons to access books, or for librarians to do their jobs. We can see beyond your manners and your careful and quiet changes. If you work to undermine these tenants of public libraries, you're not only damaging your community, you're denying our First Amendment rights. And you cannot call yourself a proud American, you can call yourself scared and selfish, ignorant, but non-American. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Peggy Lavender.
I'm Peggy Lavender, I live in Mechanicsville. I think you all know that I have been a longtime volunteer and advocate for our Mechanicsville library, the regional library in general, all libraries. I just want to say, I want to thank the library staff for their work lately. They have been under attack, and they're, it seems to be partly unnecessary, our leaders who stoked that division unnecessarily, and to the damage of our library staff, and creating fear in our patrons' and citizens' minds that our library was under attack. It's a shame that that happened. I just would like to see more transparency, more openness about our leaders and their actions and intentions regarding the library. I appreciate Ryan Hudson's statement here, I would appreciate him also unblocking me on his social media pages. And I hope that he will listen to our desires to leave the library as it was. It ran my 18 years very smoothly, I never saw any big scandal, no financial shenanigans. It grew, it prospered, it served our citizens in an amazing way, and it continues to do so. Hundreds of thousands of people in our area benefit from the system, and have before, six months ago, when the chaos and the division started. And we can keep that going, as long as we don't become a board and a system that makes decisions, value decisions, moral decisions for other people. And if you're reading the Virginia law to say that you're allowed to censor books because you don't agree with what's in them, you're reading it wrong. That's not what the law said. The law said parental notification, and our library system already has a process in place that allows parents to review, supervise, manage their own children's access to materials in the library. Again, it's all been running fine. Not that it couldn't be improved, more supported, more outreach, more services, great, but to impose bias, or some political or social agenda in something that's been running well all these years, it's noticeable, and it shouldn't happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Jen Strozier from Goochlin, and I did say that Peggy is from Hanover.
Hi, thanks for having me, I really appreciate it. I appreciate Supervisor Hudson's words, and I just wanted to share what he said, so that people know, since it is kind of public.
...in our libraries that are being marketed to our children. And what will I do about it? I will work from day one to get the moves from Hanover County to take our libraries back, and we can just completely do away with the Pamukki Regional Library Board.
So those are the words, and before that, he disparaged not only libraries and librarians, but publishers, and the American Library Association. And it's great that now he's had a change of heart, but I agree with the previous speakers saying that this library was doing great. From the time I raised my kids, from the time they were born in Goochlin, to now, the library's run great. You've been able to go in there and access wonderful material. Here's another book I received with my interlibrary loan, that I would not get. It's not porn. It's a wonderful book, it's a book that we don't own in our collection. I had to get it from a library out of state, and thankfully, our Pamukki library system was able to do that. Our library's been run wonderfully. I had a great time at the Friends of the Goochlin Library last week, and one of the women there was with the Virginia library, and she talked about how she was one of the folks that were, that created this system, the whole regional library system, and why. And the reason it was created was because places like Goochlin, who were rural, did not, were not able to afford a real library with access to all of these books. So they decided to gather resources, share resources, so that everyone could have access to books like this, to programs, to computers, and now we do. There's nothing wrong with this library system, or the people who run it, our librarians are wonderful, the ALA is a wonderful institution. The idea that someone needs to come in and fix it, and defund it, and look at every little penny that's spent, and question it, this is a public resource that we cannot afford to lose. I recommend you all go get the book on tyranny and read it. This is what it's about. It's connected to the same attacks on our school libraries, on our schools as public institutions, on election denying, it is all connected. And we don't need people coming in here and destroying resources for people who could otherwise not afford to get these. So thank you, and I hope you'll take all the considerations under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Cleo Reimer. Okay, and Cleo's from Hanover.
Yes, just right down the road. So the first thing I would like to say, thank you for letting me speak. I wholeheartedly and 100% agree with the woman from Goochlin who stood up here first. She and I could have written that, her statement, together. I feel exactly the same, and always have, and have in fact spoken out about it in the past. However, tonight, in addition to that, or today, I want to make the statement that I made before, or the request I made before, which is to have these meetings more available to people who work during the day, even if it's only half of them, by having the meetings sometime after 5:00 in the afternoon. As an example, being here is very important to me, but I am missing work because of it, and, you know, it just probably, there might be some alternatives that we could explore. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is George Crass from Goochlin.
Members of the board, I'm going to emphasize something you may already agree with. There are many great books that have upsetting passages in the book, some very upsetting passages. I will read one example. Lot and his two daughters left Zohar and settled in the mountains, for he was afraid to stay in Zohar. He and his two daughters lived in a cave. One day, the older daughter said to the younger, "Our father is old, and there is no man around here to give us children, as is the custom all over the earth. Let's get our father to drink wine, and then sleep with him, and preserve our family line through our father." That night, I got their father to drink wine, and the older daughter went in and slept with him. He was not aware when she lay down, or when she got up. The next day, the older daughter said to the younger, "Last night, I slept with my father. Let's get him to drink wine again tonight, and you..." And you... Excuse me? You can sleep with him. Sorry, I have got the shakes. Anyway, she did. And it turns out that from these two daughters came the Moabites and the Ammonites. But this is incest, no denying it. Nothing's said against it in this passage. Where does this come from? This comes from the Holy Bible. May I come back to my point? Some great books can have some very disturbing passages in them. What do you have to do? You know this already. You have to read the whole book before you pass judgment. And even BookLooks.org endorses this principle. I don't endorse BookLooks.org, but it's right there in writing. So do not give in to shock tactics, reading however shocking, which you may hear read here, may be. And I'll emphasize a point I made before, do not give in to the thinking that says "No child should read this book." The final decision should belong to the parent. That belongs to the parents of that child to decide. If you, if you take this thinking, "No child should read this book," you're taking away parents' rights.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Jamerson from King William.
Good morning, and I thank y'all for being here and doing the job that you do. Some of you have known me from my emails that I have sent you, and I'm gonna reference two, one that was sent yesterday, and one that was sent a while back. The Code of Virginia, Article 5, obscenity and related offenses, was for your review, and the second part of my talk is going to be about the truth about banned books, an article I was made aware of. The Pamukki Regional Library System may be a victim of banning books by third-party vendors that have agenda items that you're not aware of. They listed four or five books that they didn't find in other library systems, they were all conservative books, and when I looked at the Pamukki Regional Library System, they were there, I'm glad to say. Also, in the obscenity part of the talk, the Article 5, I referenced a couple of books. One was books like Flamer by Mike Curio, and Sex is a Funny Word by Corey Silverman. I'm suggesting you look at the books, look at the Article 5 for pornography, see if the books violate the spirit of the law. If it does, you may need to address where you put these books in the library, maybe even in the adult section. And the reason for doing this is I've had people tell me they concern kiddie porn. That was why I brought out the Article 5, so you could see what the state of Virginia said pornography actually was. Then you can use your mind to determine if you think that violates the spirit of the law. I would further like to say that you might consider Scott Tree Book Fairs as a source of books for children under 13. They're also providing books for other school systems. And with that, I will say I thank you, and I wish you a good day.
Thank you. All right. The next speaker is Dorothy Wasenberg from King William. Did I say that correctly?
You did, as a matter of fact.
Okay, good.
You've all seen me before. I'm Dorothy Wasenberg from King William. And first of all, I'm not asking anyone to ban books, okay? So please understand, there's a difference between what I'm going to address and not asking on banning of books, nor am I picking on the librarians, okay? But parents across the country are on the bandwagon to remove sexually explicit material to minors from our schools, as well as our libraries. So I'm not picking on anyone specifically. We, as parents and grandparents, are concerned over the continued availability of books depicting and describing pornography, pedophilia, and/or other sexually explicit contact in our libraries. I understand what the man was saying about the books of 20 years ago, or 100 years ago. They address one issue in a portion of the book. These books don't have a meaning, they have no context that goes with a story, okay? All they're doing is addressing pedophilia and other obscene actions. We're concerned over the PRL's lack of recognizing these sexual books, and are distributed through our county and the state by the ALA. We are not going to stop coming and expressing our desires to you until you move to get them in a separate location, please, in our libraries. As parents, we feel it's our right, and it is being infringed upon, to not give up our resolution until it is found with a solution. This is only about our children. We are not going to opt out, we want these books removed to a central location where our children need parental approval to check them out. I don't think that's asking too much. I'm sure you're aware of the novel Flamer, which Paul mentioned, and the explicit reference that it has to genitalia, masturbation, and sex. That's all the book is about. It doesn't have a message, other than, "Oh, sex is a funny word." It's not. You can check it out from ALA, if you do not have your distribution list at this time. Another book, The Lovely Bones, describes explicit scenes relating to sex, rape, and murder. This book is pornographic due to its graphic content. Again, not for our minor children should this be readily available. We are asking again, you listen to our suggestions and relocate these books to a different location in the library. I'm sure, should we elect to get legal advice, that you might sit up and listen to what we have to say. So please, do not force us to go down that path. Other states have done this. Many states are already doing it. Do you want Virginia to do this, when the simple answer is, please relocate the sexually explicit books and pornography books to a higher shelf behind the librarian, or in a remote area where the younger children under 13 are not constantly being exposed to them? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Sharon Landrum from King William.
Recently, I emailed the article "The Truth About Banned Books" by James Fishback to each member of this board. Even though many claim that progressive books are being censored, Mr. Fishback's research proves the exact opposite is true. Mr. Fishback surveyed the library catalogs of 35 of the largest public school districts in eight red states and six blue states, representing over 4,600 individual schools. What he discovered isn't so much a problem of banned books, it's that kids are often exposed to only one side of the story. He looked into books on racism, transgenderism, well-known progressive versus conservative thinkers, memoirs of Democrats versus Republicans, and found that the scales were tipped overwhelmingly in favor of considerably more books on the side of racism, transgenderism, progressivism, and Democrats in the collections. As Mr. Fishback said, quote, "It's no secret that many libraries have become reflections of politicized librarians." Take Emily Drobinski, president of the ALA, and a self-proclaimed Marxist, who said during a socialism conference last September, that public education, quote, "needs to be a site of socialist organizing." I think libraries really do too. We need to be on the agenda of socialist organizing, end of quote. At a 2019 committee meeting of the ALA, the librarian at West Haven High in Connecticut proudly declared that, quote, "We're using less of what I call the dead white guy books, we're including books by authors of color and women," end of quote. Due to the overt political activist position of the ALA, I would like to see PRL make a concerted effort to exit the ALA and to include equal representation in their collections of the previously addressed issues. On another note, when it comes to the issue of children's access to sexually explicit books, I continue to plead with you to place more safeguards for our children. From my understanding, PRL must abide by the Children's Internet Protection Act. This act, SEPA, was enacted by Congress in 2000 to address concerns about children's access to obscene or harmful content over the internet. And I might note, that the ALA objected to the SEPA just to show you where their sympathies lie. But why are books not given the same protective mechanism? Americans used to understand that there was something called age-appropriate content. However, it seems these sensibilities have evaporated into thin air. Is sexually explicit material acceptable in books, and not on a computer? Does this make any sense? If library, if children don't have unfettered access to the internet at libraries, why is no one out there protesting to free the internet in libraries? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no more forms filled out. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes.
Good morning, board. My name is Jessica McLean. I didn't expect to speak, but it's just become really fashionable for the porn pushers to use the Bible as some sort of a justification for porn in our libraries. So I just wanted to use my time today to set the record straight, and hopefully, no one will stand up here ever again and say that the Bible encourages porn. So 1 Corinthians 6, "Or do you not know that wrongdoing..." So 1 Corinthians 6, "Or do you not know that wrongdoers will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived. Neither the sexually immoral or idolaters, nor adulterers, nor men who have sex with men, nor thieves, nor the greedy, nor drunkards, nor slanderers, nor swindlers, will inherit the kingdom of God." Galatians 5, "The acts of the flesh are obvious, sexual immorality, impurity, and debauchery." Could go on and on. I'll use my entire three minutes. 1 Thessalonians 3, "It is God's will that you should be sanctified, that you should avoid sexual immorality." Exodus 22, "If a man seduces a virgin who has not pledged to be married and sleeps with her, he must pay the bride price." John 8, 41, "You are doing the works of your own father. We are not illegitimate children. The only Father we have is God Himself. Jesus said to them, 'If God were your Father, you would love Me; for I have come here from God; I have not come on my own. God sent me.'" Offer your bodies as a living sacrifice, Romans 12:1. But the cowardly, Revelation 21:8, "The cowardly, the unbelieving, the vile, the murderers, the sexually immoral, those who practice magic arts, idolaters, and all liars, they will be consigned to the fiery lake." I hope you're getting the picture. The Bible does not say that sexual debauchery and immorality is good. So, shall I continue? Hebrews, "Marriage should be honored by all in the marriage bed kept pure," Hebrews 13:4. Ephesians 5:3, "But among you there must not be even a hint of sexual immorality or any kind of impurity or of greed, because these are improper for God's holy people." These are the same people who say that porn does not exist in our library, and I think that says it all. I can continue, but I think I've probably made my point. Thank you very much.
All right, are there any others who would like to speak? All right, thank you. We're ready to continue on then with our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, we have the approval of the draft minutes from December 13th, regular meeting of the trustees. We also have the acceptance of the December 2023 board report, and then the acceptance of the December 2023 warrants. Do I have a motion to accept this agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, John's seconded. All right, is there any discussion before we take the vote?
Madam Chair, I had two questions regarding the budget report. I just wanted to know what the status was with King and Queen's payment for end of December. And then my second question had to do with the other category. I just noticed that was a large amount and was curious if you could shed some light on that, Mr. Shepley.
So the budget report, board report, is through the end of December, December 31st. And so, in the recording period, King and Queen has provided $59,135 as of that date. I believe that they have sent another payment since then, but it's not in the recording because it wasn't received before December 31st. There is a large increase in other impart due to having received the second part of a bequest. Dr. Hamel, he lived in Ashland. He's a retired physician, he passed away. His estate was the source of the previous $250,000. And they have finished liquidating and distributed another $97,939.80.
Have we received the payment now from the second payment from King and Queen? Has that come in yet?
I believe we have. I'll double-check on that, but I'm pretty sure that we have.
Okay. I have a question about the original budget for King and Queen. We have $139,894 on here, and yet if we add up the four amounts for the four quarters, it comes to $165,112.
Correct.
Okay. But this is what their original budget is?
If you recall, they did not have an original budget for us. And when I asked you to pass a budget, I gave you that amount. That was covering their contribution for the entire shared portion, the thing we're responsible for.
So that's the entire shared portion?
And four months of operations. It's really a placeholder, but I believe that we needed to have that there to allow us to spend money to operate the branch, which had been part of their verbal request over the course of this.
Okay, so is that something that we should change, the amount in the budget for them? Should we change it to the $165?
Well, there are several budget amendments that we'll be recommending that you make. We normally try to do that, you know, somewhere around March, just so we're not trying to change something every month. Something we're aware of doesn't change what we're doing in terms of King and Queen. But yes, it will get amended.
Adjusted, okay. Okay.
All right. I'd like to make a comment about King and Queen. Their payment was due December 28th. And from what I'm hearing, they have not, you're not sure if it's been in... So my question is, why should the other counties bother paying on time? Why should I go to my Goochlin Board Supervisors and request that they make their payments on time, which they have? Why should Hanover bother? They are continually late, disregard what I consider to be our system, and continue to have representation on our board. I don't understand, you gotta pay to play. And the continued lack of respect to the PRL from King and Queen is very troublesome to me, and it's very unfair. They made the decision to leave. We gave them the memorandum of understanding, which they read, too, yet they're still not paying. And you can't tell me if that money's in the account. Well, it should've been in the account almost a month ago. So help me understand why the other counties should pay their bills as they are doing, on time and full, when one county seems to just pay whatever, how much? It's not right, it's not fair, and I need to know if that money is in the account today.
I was able to text staff at the office. They did pay in January, and I've asked for the date.
Okay, well, we need to know that.
For that portion of it, that's fine.
How much did they pay? $59,135?
I believe so, yeah.
You believe so? We don't know.
Give me a minute.
Okay, I mean, we need to know this because the other counties need to know that they are not the only ones keeping this up low for the services provided. And once again, I emphasize, King and Queen left at their request, and which was their decision. We tried to make alternative options for them. They chose not to do them, but they have to, in order to maintain, to be part of the system and have representation on this board, they have got to pay their fair share on time. And that's all I wanna say.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask with the gift from Dr. Hamel, is there anything that the board needs to do to recognize that gift? Or is there anything the board needs to do to recognize that gift? Or what's the process as far as expressing appreciation for that?
Dr. Hamel died without any heirs. There really is no one to thank. His attorneys basically made that point in their cover letter with a statement saying just that, and saying, "You may wish to thank us for us," that, and that wouldn't really be appropriate. We were just carrying out our duty as attorneys. It had nothing to do with, you know, the intent behind it. Appreciate the question.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Any other questions or comments for the consent agenda? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, can I? I know, I believe Mrs. Sloan had one correction to the minutes that she wanted to put through before we pass these. Is that right?
Oh, yeah.
It's just a grammatical error, but yes. I have two pages to add the word "need." I think I told you, Kristy, where it was.
Yeah, we'll get together, yeah.
I don't have it printed on the sign. Yeah, it's just a little kind of blank.
I'm not sure where it is. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Then, when we vote on the acceptance, can we modify that motion so that we... And Bob, you made the motion. Can we modify that motion so that we accept the change to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. And second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. All right. No other questions or comments? Then I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has passed. All right. The next item on our agenda is the director's report. So Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
In the packet of papers that you have had in front of you, my written report should be the last document. I think at one point this morning it was. So the first thing that I would like to offer in my report is the reminder that all of the trustees need to be sure that they have filed their disclosures with the clerk of their local Board of Supervisors. There was a good question, some of you that were appointed over the summer had just done it. Do you need to do it again in January? And you do. The kind of timing on that is supposed to be that you file before you start to serve, and the filing period then is every January afterwards. So if you have questions about that or need any assistance, feel free to contact me after the meeting. Kind of going down my report, the first thing that I have on it is the reconsideration request. That was received the day we had the December meeting, December 13th. There is a copy of that in, excuse me, in the packet of papers in front of you.
One question before you move on. Just, I was reading through it. Remind me, do we define grades or ages for the young adult section? Because I think that's what this one seems to be. The person doesn't really object to the book, it's just the placement of the book.
That was what they were asking, is whether it could be moved. And they asked for it to be moved to young adults or teens. And I would say that the young adult starts sort of 13 to 18. Earlier than that is kind of a broad range. We start with picture books for the younger readers.
So if it's 13 to 18, and this book list, I assume this is a review that's attached? It says grade six to eight? Is that the recommended?
That's their recommendation.
So we've got it for basically 12 and under? And I think maybe that's why we're giving, you know, if the review says six through eight, it could very well fall on a young adult. I think that's, I guess I'm trying to understand, it's kind of how do we determine where it ends up?
Right. One of the things that we do with the collection, which is sort of based on the research and the guidance, is the materials in the age range need to suit everybody in it. And that means that you're on the top end of it as well. So that, you know, someone in sixth grade is, the only materials in that collection are for first graders. That wouldn't make sense either. But again, that's why parents are expected to be the ones that are monitoring and picking the materials for their children to approve that.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. My understanding that, and you mentioned it in your letter, is the BISAC codes? It's how you know where to put a book? Because clearly you have thousands of books in the whole system.
Right, use multiple points.
And the BISAC codes are determined by an organization, a group of basically a couple hundred people, I guess, from all over the country get together and decide where these books are gonna be shelved. And if you dig deep into that organization, they clearly have a bias. I won't share what the bias is, but I think that's where some of this, the root of the problem exists, when there's confusion about the mis-shelving in some people's opinions of books, is that that comes from the group that runs BISAC and the Book Industry Standards and Communications Group. They recommend where these books go. And I think that to have a better understanding of how books end up in the kids' juvenile section, it's incumbent upon us to understand the Book Industry Study Group that puts this system together. So that might be helpful to some to better understand why we have this confusion amongst why certain books are in the juvenile section that perhaps others feel should be elsewhere.
So the BISAC headings, that agency is not putting their headings onto somebody else's book? The people that produce the book use that to identify it?
I understand, the publishing industry uses them, yes.
Yeah.
But they determine their standards through the Book Industry Study Group. And it just kind of, it helps me understand. I mean, I was in publishing business in New York for 15 years, and I did not even know this, that there was this group. And I don't know if they were informed yet, but because I had, I did wonder, how can a librarian possibly know where every book is supposed to go? There's so many coming through the system. Well, it's all metadata, which also makes sense. But I believe that to understand how certain books get shelved certain ways, you must understand where the metadata is coming from. And this is a helpful guide to understanding how certain things get done in terms of starting with the publishers and going through, working through the system. So I just thought that that's a helpful piece of information because of the clear confusion, disappointment, however you want to term it, of how some books are shelved. You know, whatever your bias happens to be, wherever you want things to be shelved, whatever. This is where it comes from. That's just all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Could I make an additional point? After receiving this information from you, I came to the Atlee Library yesterday, and I read this book in its entirety. I could not find the book initially because it wasn't on the stacks or in the stacks filed. It was actually on display above the stacks, and then I was able to find it. I did a little research on what other libraries in the state of Virginia actually own this book. I went to Fairfax, Arlington, Fauquier. I went to Williamsburg, Virginia Beach, Central Repahannock, Jefferson Madison, even Chesterfield and Richmond. None of those libraries actually have stocked this book. There are only two libraries that I found, and again, I didn't check all of them, but tried to hit some of the major areas. The two libraries... The two libraries that have it are Henrico and Pamunkey Regional Library. Pamunkey Regional has classified this book as a juvenile book, Henrico has classified this book as a young adult book. This is not the first time that we have seen these kind of discrepancies between the two libraries, and I think what it shows is that librarians do have some leeway in how they categorize books. I know myself from a conversation that I had with the collections department as a private citizen back in February last year, that our people actually choose where they put them when they order them, there's a drop-down menu, they can choose juvenile or young adult. And so there is choice in where things can be put, it's not an automatic decision. And I believe this is a situation that's going to keep coming back, and it actually goes back to one of the issues that the Hanover County Board of Supervisors brought to our attention in a letter that they sent to this board on April 3rd, 2023. One of their recommendations or suggestions was to have age appropriateness of materials and sections of the library should be considered to better differentiate elementary school, middle school, high school, and adult audiences. It is not clear to parents that the juvenile section goes through middle school, and it's also not clear to parents which books are more geared toward middle school and which books are geared more towards juvenile. And I think the Pamunkey Regional Library needs to seriously look at this, how we're going to help parents differentiate between which books are for which age categories. This is not going to go away, it's going to keep coming back. Actually, Madam Chair, could I make a motion that we ask the Pamunkey Regional Library staff to put together a proposal for how they could differentiate between elementary and middle-grade books within the juvenile section to present at our next meeting?
Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Please say aye or no. Motion passed. So, that is a task for the staff for next month. All right. Any other questions, comments about this, this particular reconsideration form? Okay, let's go ahead, Tom, then we can move on, okay?
Okay, thank you. Just, just a brief list of chronological items. At the beginning of the report, we had the Personnel Committee meeting, December 19th. I had a meeting regarding the Mount Pelear Recreation Center and Library, December 21st, some leave with the holidays. I attended the Hanover Department Head meeting, January 4th. Did have a meeting with Katie Dickinson Schutz from Human Resources. Library management team met at West Point, January 9th, which was good, folks got to tour the future branch there. January 22nd, was asked to attend the King William Board of Supervisors meeting. They were discussing King and Queen's leaving the regional library, they had a few questions. They did have a motion and approved a vote to allow King and Queen to leave June 30th, 2024, earlier than the two-year notice. Related to Ms. Sloan's questions, the payment was the, from King and Queen, was the $59,135. It was received on January 12th. I don't, I don't know if that means that they keyed it December 28th and took that long. They, they usually are slow in paying, just for what little that's worth for.
On King and Queen, before we move off, and this might be for Dennis or Jim, has there been any more discussion between the three that are remaining on what the agreement between the three are going to be as it comes to the board moving forward, as far as the makeup of the work?
The work with the regional agreement is ongoing. I can tell you that Hanover is in the process of drafting something to share with the other localities, and, and then to be able to present to our, our boards after that, so I don't really have a timeline at this point, but I can tell you that it is in the works.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I will say that King William County Administrator, as of our monthly meeting last week, was not aware of the progress, so you might want to make sure all the member localities are aware of what's going on.
Sure, I'd be glad to follow up with him, thank you.
Kind of moving along in bullet points which are more topical. We've spent a lot of time in the branch this month, working on moving, making decisions, packing, all of those different things. I think that we're going to have the branch pretty much emptied by the end of the day tomorrow. It's, it's been a very tight timeframe, and the holidays have not helped any of it to get people together, to be able to make decisions, but we're in pretty good shape at this point. 31st is next week. We've, we've been able to bring back a lot of the collection, to try to integrate, make use of it with the other branches. Some of it's going to friend groups, and some of it we will just end up surplusing.
Can I ask just a quick question? One of the things that was in the MOU was the cost of the move, and the, I don't, do you have a figure, do you have a guesstimate of what that cost is going to be that King and Queen would cover?
Well, I mean, I think the MOU indicated that they would pay for us to be operating in the branch the month, which was approximately $11,000.
Right.
I know that, I mean, their hope is that all of our costs end up being, you know, within the $11,000. I wouldn't be surprised that, that that is the case. We're down to, in terms of using movers, we're down to really just a few items that we can't really safely move ourselves, so that, like, that cost is not really going to be more than a few hundred bucks, I don't think. If, the estimate to move, if, if the movers had to move sort of everything, including all of the materials, his estimate for that was less than $1,700, and staff have not been working in the branch, you know, at least a week, maybe week and a half, so. I think we'll be either right on, maybe a little under.
Okay, okay, good.
I ended up having two bullets on that. Two of the things that they had asked, they wanted to retain sort of our branch phone number, and then the network connection, which is the River Street fiber connection. So both of those accounts are in the process of being transferred. I believe the phone has been completed, I don't really have a better update on the network, and as I understood it, all of the paperwork has been done because they're also taking over the lease for the copier, so. Just kind of being pulled back and forth on all of these things all of the time, but we did some, go ahead.
No.
Question?
No.
Okay, sorry. Just moving down the list, we did do some work on the draft library card policy and...
Which we will cover.
I believe that is also in your packet. So, we kind of, we went a little back and forth, but with some of the meetings. February board meeting will be at the Ashland Branch, since we will no longer have King and Queen. To the audit, the audit is complete, it's in front of you, you, you see the paper copies. As far as I know, we still don't have, have the PDF, the electronic copy of that, working to get that. Do you know that they billed us the final bill? I believe that Mr. Reinhardt had said around $4,500, the final bill was $4,551. I have worked with Ms. Schaber, so we have an agreement in place, so we'll be able to use her assistance moving forward with FY23. I don't know if you have other audit questions, that's kind of why Ms. Baxter is here, if there were going to be some, and I'm not, it's going to be farther down on the agenda as well, so. I don't know if you want, do you want some highlights from this?
We can go ahead and, we can do it now, I don't have a problem with that, we can...
Well, if you would turn to page 60. Six, zero. That, in a summary, is, you know, sort of how the library's fiscal year went. You have, you have revenues at the top, expenditures, I'll say in the middle, you have a difference, which in this case, revenues were under expenditures, so that is spending down the library's fund balance. And you see fund balance for FY21, which would be fund balance beginning of the year, $2,780,000, minus the $217,000 is a total fund balance of $2,562,000. If we had underspent, then you would have added to the fund balance. That's generally one of the most important pieces of information, fund balance. And then if, turning to the front of the book, if you look at page six. The total net position listed, it's $2.6 million, and that is kind of the other important number that the accountants, I guess I would say, particularly look at. And my lay definition or understanding for those, fund balance is what money you have, and net position is supposed to be your assets and liabilities and what you would have available, like a real number. Fund balance is kind of a, if you think of your own, like, net worth, like, if, you know, if you have an idea of what your personal net worth is, well, you know how much money you have and what isn't liquid, and, you know, some of those things, so. I don't know if anyone has had enough time to look at it, if you have questions, if you want to come back to that, we may be talking about it, I guess, again, in finance, if there are further questions, if Mr. Reinhardt answers at the December meeting.
Any questions that anybody wants to?
I mean, I just have one question, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but I'd like to know where we are with the 23 audit, now that this is complete. Are we on schedule to meet?
We're on a schedule to get the 23 audit, you know, finished. I don't really have any better estimated date on that than I did previously, like at the Personnel Committee meeting. We started working on that, again, most heavily after the holidays, Mayor's was gone. Mayor's needs, you know, the data here to be able to move forward, so that was a big step, and then we also have Ms. Schaber's assistance to help us get that done. I know that we've been responding to the requests from Mayor's, providing whatever, you know, client-side information that we can, and are working, working forward with that.
So, when our board asks us, when Goochlin asks us how it's going, do, can we give them a rough date, that we can anticipate it would be complete?
The rough date that I said in the Personnel Committee, I believe, was end of February?
I thought it was March 1st.
Yes.
So...
That, that, it would be complete?
We're working as quickly as we can to, to try to get it done. We want it done probably more than you.
I'm sure, I am sure you do. I appreciate that.
One of the problem areas here had to do with the leases and the capital assets, and sort of new in working with the 23 audit is this other tool called Debt Book. I know that, you know, Ken's been working on those entries with some of the county staff to get that situated, and one of the, one of the extra features that that has is that he's able to share that with PB Mayor's, because it's an online resource, that he can give them a guest account there, and he's also able to do that for Ms. Schaber, so...
That should help.
That should help quite a bit, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question. So this focus on the FY22 audit started after we received a letter from Mr. Budeski at the end of October, asking us to focus on this, and I'm just wondering if either of the Hanover representatives, Ms. Baxter or Mr. Taylor, have any comments? Is Hanover County happy with the progress that PRL is making? Are there any concerns that have come up in the audit or with FY23 from their perspective, or are we moving in the right direction?
Thank you. From our perspective, we feel like things are progressing fine with the FY23 audit. I had an opportunity to check with our Finance Director just yesterday, and she provided a similar update to what Mr. Shepley provided to you today. So I think things are, are moving ahead. I understand that the, the new audit firm is working remotely this week on, on this audit, so I, we don't have any concerns at this point. I was talking with Mrs. Baxter this morning, and we do feel like focusing kind of on the future with the new audit firm will, will make a difference, and so, Angela, if you have anything, do you want to comment?
The only thing that I would add from what Jim stated is the point that we do have a new audit firm. For those in the room, internal audit does not perform the external audit or the audit of the financial statements, I just wanted that clear. So there are a third party that do that, and we are starting with a new relationship with PB Mayor's. The county of Hanover did have a positive working relationship with them, this go around in their own personal fiscal three, financial statements, so hopefully they'll find that relationship again beneficial and more collaborative than we had in our past partners. We do agree that partnering with Ms. Schaber is definitely in a positive direction, adding the toolsets such as the Debt Book will make the process easier, so we do commend you guys for doing that, and we're looking forward to seeing the fiscal year 23 audit reports, and hopefully we will see the positive progress.
Thank you. Any other questions about the audit? Okay, I think we can move on.
Okay. Just wanted to kind of note, we've dealt with some winter weather. That's always a bit of a challenge, sort of a reminder as a process for that, it's a little bit different depending on where you're at. During business hours, we usually follow the county, with the exception of the town of West Point, the West Point branch usually follows the town, depending on what the weather is. Sort of to state the obvious, like, we don't close the Goochlin branch because we closed the West Point branch and vice versa, they often are having different weather. After hours, we, we have to make the call in weekends, and we do the best we can to kind of balance, making sure that we are open for the public and both the public and staff safety, timing on things. We do the best that we can. I will tell you, if you've ever had to deal with this, you know, in your own experience, pretty much whatever you do, somebody will consider it to be the wrong decision.
Right.
It's, it's a tough call.
Do we, on the weekends, do we contact, like, the local police, you know, local sheriff's office or anything?
Usually not. I mean, if you do, their recommendation almost always will be... I mean, if you do, their recommendation almost always will be to stay home, yeah. We use, I mean, we use the TV weather forecast, and we look at V dot. You know, it kind of depends who's around, you know. I have, like, in Goochlin with Martin Luther King holiday, I was able to get some help from them, you know, to get a better sense of what was going on, so it's always a tough call. And then another kind of, I think, wintery thing is, just to note, we did have another noticeable spike with illnesses after the holidays, had several people that were out, and we sort of had, like, a little bit of a peak and then kind of a smaller bump. We hope that we're through with that at this point. Moving on to projects, Montpelier, big effort trying to get all the shelving and furniture ordered, working with the IT there, and kind of the same thing for West Point. And if you have the minute or two, I can put some images of West Point on the screen that the town has up, I'll do that here sort of at the end, if that's okay. Our budget process, that's, that's, that's moving ahead. I expect we may have some more information on that coming here in the next few weeks. I think all three of the remaining partners in the region are kind of getting their feet under them after the election with their new boards and everything, so we'll be paying attention to that, probably have more things to share. And then I, lastly, I wanted to kind of recognize, we had two resignations, Michael and Natali, our branch manager at Ashland, this is kind of a second career for him, but he has, he has decided that he's ready to go back and retire, like, for good at this point. And then Jan Booth is our page at the Mechanicsville branch, and Jan is notable because she has worked for us for forty-five years. So, we've appreciated her service greatly. I think she went home for the holiday break and decided that maybe it was time and that that was a good thing to do. So, you know, just want to thank them both and make sure that you were aware of those. And then, just as I get the images on screen, we've really been moving in a lot of different directions here in December and January, and with the holidays.
I didn't want to get right before I got to the holidays either.
Sorry. Just, just wanted to thank all of the staff for their flexibility, helping us get things done, juggling lots of activities.
I'll get out, so people can see.
We have the front, obviously, of the building. I think that it's, was it, it was washed, was it painted?
It has been washed, it will be painted.
Have you on?
I'm sorry, this is West Point?
This is West Point.
Just confirm.
Looks a long way from the nearby old one.
There's, there's a sign that could be over the entrance here. That has no reason to put that up for painting in the middle of the wall, not good painting in January. This is our service desk. The talented staff at West Point ended up doing most of the construction there at the base, contractors that paint and walls. That's just a close-up of the ever-populated fish lights that would be in the children's area. Clearly, this teal-ish blue is one of our accent colors. This, this angle is really looking out to where they took the picture of the front of the building, pretty much, and the door to your left, that is kind of hidden here behind the trashcan, but that's a new door, cut into the concrete wall, and the town of West Point, Mr. Edwards, where it's a work in the facility, so we're going to have an outdoor garden space there, which is really nice to have right there. Green is the other accent color. That's a pretty big wall, but it's, there's more green to that than meets the eye here, but the structure is going to be, it's a long rectangle, so you're actually just outside of the children's area, I believe, here, looking back towards the door to the outside that is down here in the corner. The circ desk that we showed you, service desk, is right in here, and then we have collaborative rooms down the hallway. And this is cabinetry going up in the multipurpose meeting room. The meeting room is going to be divided, this is a movable wall, so we can divide it into, to have more flexibility. And this, this area will be the staff area when things are moved in. Very pleased with the amount of light.
I was just going to say, you've got lots of windows there.
This is, this is the children's room, you can see the fish lights again, and then the two doors where the exit signs are behind, those are the doors leading into the multipurpose meeting room. I think this is the bathroom vanity lane on its side.
There are doors, though, this time.
Nice view of the outside space here. A detail of the one down in Blue Wall. I think this is a different angle.
One door right here.
Oh, yeah, I see that. And that looks like it's from doorway to the outside space. Pretty exciting. The town has done a great job with trying to provide an updated space appropriate to provide services.
And would this be an appropriate time for John, for you to say anything about the finances? Because I think that's kind of exciting, too.
I would just say nice.
You've done such a good job on it. Yeah, your budget.
Well, it's, it's still a work in progress, we still obviously have flooring to go in, going to need it to be delivered, IT work and so forth, but the original architect's estimate is about one point one million. Our estimate is we're going to finish it at around five hundred dollars.
That's incredible, that's an incredible savings, so. And the fact that you all are dividing that savings between all the contributors, so the, Pumonkey will have some of the savings, too, so, good.
So, I know this is in a shopping center with other stores at the front, I drove past there on the last West Point visit. Will Pumonkey Regional Library have any signage on the road? Will it be part of the?
No, ma'am, it'll be on the backside.
No, okay, and only the backside, okay. So, no signage with the other stores?
There will of course be the, the sort of directional signs that you see around where people look to libraries, that they're already located.
Yeah, okay.
John, you didn't hear me earlier, nice job.
Yes.
Nice job in refurbishing that place.
It looks great.
I just walk in and look every now and then and say, "Looks good."
You were, you were involved, you were involved, nice job. Hey Tom, nice job for you for what you've done, too.
So, mid to late spring move in, maybe? What we're hoping.
Working, working on all of that.
Late spring.
Okay. Are you, that's complete?
That would, that would close my report, unless there were any questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, standing committees are next, and I know that because of holidays, there haven't been as many meetings as we had planned on. So, Financial Committee report, John?
We did not meet in the previous month. We were planning to meet, I believe, on the seventh, due to some scheduling conflicts, we're in the process of rescheduling that, that would be February seventh. We're rescheduling that, looks like it's going to be February twenty-second, pending identification of a meeting location, and then we'll firm that up, but it'll be that afternoon, so.
Okay, it'll be in the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. All righty. And Personnel Committee?
Yep. We met in December, you know, we were late to get, get going because of just forming our committee with changes on the board, and has brought us to getting director goals much later than we would like. John made that point to me when I got here, and it's a valid point to give goals to the director in January or February, when the fiscal year ends in, in June is not ideal, so we'll certainly make an effort to expedite this next year. I did circulate the draft, a couple of you have noted that you wanted to make some changes or amendments, I don't know if we want to do that now.
Yes, because we need to get these accepted.
Yep.
So that we can move forward, so. All right, did, do you want to pass out copies?
I've already given everybody a copy.
Okay, everybody's got a copy.
Yep.
Okay, good. They, if you have any kind of changes you would like to suggest, please, this is a good time to do it.
I would just note that these are, in fact, for FY twenty-four, which began July twenty-three, we are a four-county region, not a three-county region. King and Queen is still a full member of this region until the vote for them to depart, which we anticipate will be at the end of FY twenty-four, if we so. I know we all have different feelings about their departure, but they are still members.
Yep.
Okay, so that would be one of the changes?
Just multiple references to three jurisdictions, so we would just need to make sure we're uniform throughout to add King and Queen back in here.
Okay. Any other changes that anyone would like to make? Tom, have you had, you've had a chance to look at this, right?
I have not.
No, you have not.
It's probably important to.
Yes.
It's not a lot different than what was, we had last year.
Last year.
There's a couple of small tweaks. I think we added, we added, if you remember, we added that three-one goal for the audit just as a measurable item. I don't recall too many significant changes, and I don't know if anybody else, Bob, you had mentioned you maybe had a tweak.
I was going to, yes, we're an opportunity to say something. I, I spoke with Brian just before the meeting, but I, I, I don't want to make changes to this document, but I, I would like to make a statement that I think that these are more of a, a listing of tasks, rather than setting specific goals that have a point of, an item being pursued and delivered in a timeframe in order to enhance some aspect of the library system, rather than just achieving marks along the way in a, in a task, where it's almost like a job description, and these are the things that the individual is going to do. I'd like to work more closely with you, maybe looking at even the job description and my own goals that I had present to my board when I ran a nonprofit, there were specific things that we both agreed upon, I had ideas of things that I would like to do, they would agree to those, but I'd have to specify a beginning and the delivery of that item, and how does it relate to the overall performance of the operation that I was in charge of, and I'd like to work more closely with the group to define that kind of a rubric for this position here.
And I think that that's valid, very valid. You would not be a voting member, but you absolutely can attend the meeting, if that's not a issue. Okay. Go ahead.
And, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, those good, those good comments also. The, the only comment I would want to make, and I spoke a bar about this very briefly yesterday, and when we, when we get to filling out our aspect of these goals or tasks, they may realize, we gave them to Tom today, this is, this is not a year. We're not, we're not judging a year of accomplishments.
That's why we made minimal changes, to be, to be fair.
I know, that's why, that's why I said something saying, "Nice job." Exactly, you did a nice job, you really did. But, just keep that in mind, I like to say that today, so it's, it's been said, so just keep that in mind as we go forward.
I just have one brief comment, and that is under number three, working with the board, plus these under the, under C. And maybe this covers it, but I just want to emphasize that receiving documents the day of the meeting that we're supposed to have knowledge of is very difficult, so I would like to strive for receiving all documents the Friday before the meeting, so that we really have a chance to read and digest everything before the meeting. It's just really difficult to try to read a document while it's being presented, or trying to discuss it with any kind of knowledge or good sense, it's just really hard to do, so.
Yeah, that's my fault for the goals. Didn't give you a lot of time.
You're being kind, it's impossible.
Well, not just this one, but just in general, I mean, we got this last night, but that, which was helpful, you didn't just throw it down on us today, but I'm just saying that in general, it's really important to get everything up front, if possible, I know it's not always possible.
Any other comments?
I have an additional comment, or a question, actually, for Mr. Martin. I know there was some talk about doing a three-sixty review.
Yes, I was going to hit that in the next, after we got these.
Okay, all right, great.
If we could get those, these in motion.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, we, we don't have a motion yet. Is there a motion to accept the director's goals for the fiscal year of 2024, and actually, if you wanted, we could even put in here, Jan, for January through, through June, if, I don't know, if people are.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll leave it like it is, unless I hear other comments. All right, I, we do need a motion with the change of three to four as far as the number of jurisdictions. Do I have here, actually, this is a motion from your committee, so do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept director's goals for FY 2024 with the adjustment of moving it back to the four county regions, I believe there's three places that we need to do that.
Right. And because it came from a committee, we don't need a second on that. All right, all those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we'll move forward with that.
So, the second thing to Ms. Schumacher's question, we did discuss potential of doing a three-six review, I brought it up only as somebody who has employees that it was, I've done one in, in my past, and it was beneficial to, you know, not only get a review from the people I work for, but the people that work for me, sometimes you learn things that help you be better at your job, and ultimately maybe help them be better at theirs, so looked into some cost on that, it ranges on how deep in the lead you want to get, but it's about, on average, about two hundred dollars an employee. I would recommend that we either do it for all full-time staff or only direct reports if we want to keep the cost down, but that would, that, that's, you know, essentially about a ballpark cost for that review. Tom, how many full-time staffs?
Thirty-two.
Oh, yeah, so that's, that's pricey, how many direct reports do you have?
Seven, six or seven.
Yeah, that makes more sense. So, I would, I would, I would say my, my recommendation would be to direct reports only.
Would you recommend that this be started this year, or would you start it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could do it in May when we all do our review.
Okay.
If we want, if, if the board so chooses.
Yeah, we need a, we need a, we need a full board vote or a discussion, a full board vote before we make that change.
Oh, right, I, I agree.
Okay, okay.
No, I just was curious as to timeline.
Okay.
Was he thinking of, is something that we would do right now? Or is it something that we would wait until FY '25?
It would need to be on the agenda.
Pardon?
It would need to be on the agenda. Not just brought up in a meeting.
Sure, so for, for purposes today was to throw the idea out, discuss it. If we're going to not execute it till later in the year when we do our review, it can certainly be part of a future agenda.
Okay. All right, so we're talking, we are talking about trying to do it for this year, though.
I think so, yeah.
Is what you're saying? Okay, okay, that was my question.
If it's doable.
Okay. So, that will come up then, hopefully, next month with your committee report. All right, is there, are there any other pieces of information from the Personnel Committee?
No, ma'am. Not unless...
Okay.
Barbara, there's, there's one thing that I, I would like to see if it's possible. Is, is there a chance that we can get the review process, Tom, that you have for your own direct reports? And maybe a sampling of how you reviewed them in the past?
Sure.
I'm sorry, people.
He's asking, I think, to, just to repeat it, is that he'd like to have an overview of the library's review process for staff.
Staff.
Okay, but not the, not the...
Tom is still the one who would do it. It's, but it's just to know what the tool...
But to see the, he's not asking to receive the review that you do of staff, is it?
Not a specific review.
No.
He's just asking in general, kind of the tools.
Part of that, that's more, Mr. Johnson, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, we're a little across from each other. I just can't hear what you're asking for, so I want to make sure. You're not asking for, to see the review, Tom writes of its staff?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other Personnel comments, questions? Okay, in that case, let's go ahead and move to old business. Under old business, the King and Queen departure. The first item on there was the update of the status of the processes in place for the King and Queen departure. I'm going to turn that to you.
I think we did that in my, my report already, so I don't know what other questions you have.
Did you, how much, how much of our staff did we use to, to get this done?
We've, we've really only used our staff at this point in time. The branch, existing branch staff did most of the packing, like of the collection. When that was done, they've kind of trickled off and are working in their other positions if, if they chose to continue with us. One chose not to. She may come back. She's got some stuff personal, I think, so, but that's...
And while we're on this, and, and I don't know if, how appropriate this is, but I'd love to get... Tricia, do you have any input or update on where King and Queen is in your process? You know, for moving forward with the library? I mean...
It's supposed to open February 1st.
February 1st?
First board meeting is February 6th.
Okay.
Will you be on the board? Yeah, six board members.
Good. Okay, I was just curious as to where it was.
I've not, I've not been in the building since they closed it in December, so.
Does they, I mean, have you all been purchasing collections? Okay.
I assume since they're going to open the first.
There's something there. Okay. You know what happens when you assume?
Madam Chair, one, one other update that has not been mentioned, but I did intend to. This is a draft of the bill that's been entered, Delegate Hodges, who represents King and Queen, King William. It, it is a bill to allow King and Queen to have a public library without a library board. The default in the Code of Virginia is that you do have a library board. There are four other systems, Bodata, Caroline, Chesterfield, and Shenandoah that do not have either a governing board or an advisory board. And so, assuming this would be approved by the legislature, their intention is to have this as a county department.
Okay.
They are moving forward with that.
Gotcha, good, okay. That was good information. Okay, the policy for registration, we are going to talk some about other policies, but this policy is a policy that needs to be adopted because it is part of what King and Queen had asked for in the, in the MOU. They had asked for information for their citizenry, citizenry. And we did send out a copy of the policy statement for the registration of library cards. And you'll notice that, I'm not going to read it to you because you, you've had it in your possession, but that the number five in particular says, "The Board of Trustees may determine that for any jurisdiction that departs the Pumonkie Regional Library System, the residents of that jurisdiction, regardless of their eligibility for a library card, set forth above, which are the items that, you know, you can apply for a, a library card to use in other Pumonkie regional libraries, set forth above, may be ineligible for a library card for a period of time. Any such action will be communicated to the residents of that jurisdiction through postings at all library branches and through other measures the Board of Trustees deems important." This will lead into, we, we will have another motion in a minute to determine as a board how we are going to approach King and Queen leaving the, the Pumonkie. We do, however, need to have a motion and a second for this particular policy first. And we need to go ahead and, and vote on this. So, do I have a motion to accept this particular, a motion, not necessarily accept, but a motion about this particular policy?
I have a question.
Can we, can we do the motion first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the policy as stated.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay, Bob, seconded. All right, and your question, Barbara?
I just need some clarity on item two. It says, "Other Virginians may be eligible for a free card by presenting a public library card from their place of residence." Can you explain that to me? What other Virginians are we talking about?
Well, if, you know, somebody who lives in Henrico County that wanted to come and use one of the Hannover County libraries or one of the, Goochland's library. If they have a library card from Henrico, they can use our library.
Do we have, does that mean we have reciprocal agreements with those libraries?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand.
In fact, I think Jen had a book that she had gotten through that process, so...
That's different.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure about that, all right.
Really, really what that statement means is that we are reciprocating throughout the state.
Throughout the state.
Yes, by policy. If, you know, if you're coming to us from Virginia Beach, you know, Charlottesville, Northern Virginia, whatever, you know, I'm here in town, I'm visiting my grandkids or my parents, whatever. We reciprocate automatically. Other libraries do this differently. They consider it, you know, sort of one-on-one. Henrico does reciprocate with us and most of their neighbors, to the best of my knowledge. The, the way that this generally works is that these are very small percentages. You know, we don't have lots of people from the other localities.
My personal experience was that I, I wasn't able to get a book, but that was a while back. So, that's, that's all, yeah. I just needed clarity, and I figured that's what it meant.
Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So, I have, I have a question, Madam Chair. So, last meeting, we were given a policy proposal for registration for library cards. And then this clean draft was presented to us this time around. And there are discrepancies between those. I'm just wondering, are there any changes to the procedure statements in the policy? Or are those all remaining the same?
Those are all removed.
Oh, they're removed? So, we're getting rid of those statements completely? Okay, thank you for clarifying.
The policy usually doesn't have the procedures in it.
Okay, so we're removing procedures. So, one of the things that was listed in the procedure was the fee. Is that not something that we want in the policy then? Is that just for non-residents?
I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that you really need, need that to be in the policy.
Okay.
I mean, if you're, you know, if we were adjusting it, I mean, it's like, do you want that to be something you have to do every time it's adjusted? Not that we're going wild with adjustments with it. It, it really is more of an administrative function than it is policy.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? If not, then we have a motion on the floor. So, all those in favor of the motion to accept this, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have the, a new policy then for the registration of library cards. Now, along with that, because number five requires us as a board to determine how we're going to handle the departure of King and Queen's residents, I have a motion that I have sent out. And on this motion, I move that in accordance with the library policies, and I am making this motion, that in accordance with the library's policy on registration for library cards, should King and Queen leave the Pumonkie Regional Library System in 2024, residents of King and Queen County be ineligible for a library card beginning that, the date that King and Queen leaves the system through December 31st, 2025. And I, before I finish with that motion, Dennis, I have a question for you because we worked on this motion. That should that be through December 31st, 2025? Or should it be and for the next 18 months? Depending on what the, you know, the, when they leave?
That certainly is up to the library board. The date of December 31st, 2025 is the one that had been discussed beforehand. It's anticipated that King and Queen will be leaving effective July 1. This is 18 months. It can be a date that the library board determines. It should just make sense, whatever that is, in either a calendar year or fiscal year seems to be an appropriate way to end. I think the 18 months was more of a, in, in general terms, should, for whatever reason, King and Queen only leave August 1st? I'm not sure if that one month makes a, a dramatic difference. I think the intent here is to make it clear that it is not just a few-month period, that it is intended to be, in essence, one year plus, but not a, a permanent situation. So, that's the date. But certainly the library board, if you want a different date, you can do that. I would just suggest that you consult with Mr. Shepley as to the, what would be an appropriate date if you choose something other than December 31st, 25.
And I was going to ask you, Tom, do we, I know you said King and Queen just voted to approve...
King William.
Or King William, I'm sorry. King William voted to approve letting King and Queen leave a year early. Have Goochland and Hannover also done that? Because if they have, then this is kind of a moot point, you know?
To, to the best of my knowledge, they have not. I don't, this is not really a moot point, given, I mean, there's sort of two processes that are paralleling here. The first one is, is there going to be a new regional agreement, which we have some reason to believe there will be on or about June 30th of 2024.
Right.
If something delays that, you know, then, then we'll kind of deal with that as it comes. This, this timeframe or this date, I would say, the board would also have the opportunity to change that later, if they felt the need to, correct?
Got it. Then I think we leave it with December 31st, 2025, okay?
Madam Chair, my recollection of the MOU is we specifically addressed this date in the MOU. It was approved by this body and King and Queen, and that agreement has been signed. Doesn't that agreement govern?
That's what I asked, too.
The agreement, in, that, that is primarily dealing with the closure of the branch. But yes, we, I would not recommend a date before then because that certainly makes clear that there should be ineligible until that point. The question is whether, as I said, let's say, for whatever reason, King and Queen remains in the system until December 31st of 2024. You could extend this date beyond that if you wanted to have the 18 months or something like that. I think that the purpose for here is, the way that the MOU was structured was that there needs to be a policy and a particular date that could be posted as library board policy, not a provision of the memorandum of understanding. So, to borrow a phrase from a former deputy county administrator who worked for Hannover, "This is the belt and suspenders of the nation."
Good question. We need a second on the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Joe, seconded. Okay, any other questions? And that was, I, I had that exact same question, John, so. Okay, any other comments, questions about this motion? Okay, and the, the purpose behind this is just simply that we have three other jurisdictions who are paying for these privileges. And it, once King and Queen leaves Pumonkie, there needs to be a period of time that it allows King and Queen that opportunity to get their library up and established. And it also allows for fairness between the other jurisdictions who are paying for this privilege, so. Okay, having no other questions or comments, I call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion has passed, okay. All right.
Madam Chair, did I ask Mr. Shepley a question?
Sure.
It, it goes back to his director's report. It's a very modern question, and it got, it got swallowed up in the other discussion. The, Jam Booth and the branch manager, particularly Jam Booth, was there, was there a nice reception, hell, for her or something? Forty-five years, gosh, I mean, I hope, I hope, I hope something occurred there.
So, I mean, at this point, what has been planned has been planned by her local colleagues there.
Her local colleagues, good.
Yeah. I believe there'll be further recognition later.
Okay, okay. I know, for all those times I was chair, we would, I would be notified of those. But in 45 years, needs special recognition. That's a long time for service.
What if the appropriate director in a meeting? Has that been done in the past?
That hasn't been done. Yeah, I mean, that would...
You can say no.
Well, I, I mean, I hesitate to speak to you before we've spoken to her about, about any of these options. Yeah.
But we have talked about the recognition, yes.
Yeah, as far as, or recognition or something, some people want it, some people don't. It, it comes down, in the past, it always came down to the individual of who they may want there or if they, if they wanted more recognition or something. Some people, you know, just would like to have their colleagues there and move on.
I'm also happy, as the secretary of the board, to organize thank you cards for both of them that I could bring to the next meeting and everyone sign.
And there's the, there's the, the one that we have every year for.
I mean, we have, we have a employee recognition process, you know, in place as well, yeah.
Without having a individual one, so.
There's, I, that's a nice gesture. I think there is no harm in doing the cards. Thank you.
Okay.
Can't tell our staff thank you enough times.
That's true. Like I said, it was a simple question.
Great. All right. I think we have completed the information for King and Queen. Audit updates, I think we pretty well covered those through the discussion of your, in your report. So, and we've talked about the West Point relocation project. Is there anything else, John, you would like to add to that?
No.
Okay, okay. I think we, on real good target for that. And then Montpelier, is there anything else that you need to add, Tom, to that?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay. All right, so we are moving on to new business. And the first piece of new business is to review of library policies. And I, I will refer us back to the handbook for trustees that in this handbook, it does talk about the fact that we as trustees are responsible for library policies for our particular region. And we, Tom and I have talked about this. We went back through, we have lots of policies. They are all posted on the website. And we are going to get hard copies for everybody, and we'll get those sent to you. Because what I would like for you to do is, I'd like for all of the board members between now and the next meeting to read through those policies. You will find that some of them are very old or some of them are very outdated. Some of them need some revision to them. Some of them may not need anything at this point. But we need to start looking at our policies. I would ask that, John, if you could have the financial committee take even a second look at the financial policies. And Ryan, if you can have the personnel committee take a second look at the personnel policies. Those are broken out that way. And then what we will do then next month is, I think we need to, from, from your review, I'd like you to determine those that you feel like need more than just a courtesy look at them and those that need some more in-depth work on them. And we will, next month, I hope we can organize how we go about doing a review of the other piece of the library policies. And this is minor in comparison to what they say, and that is that the formatting is a mess across these. And we, we both agreed, you know, it's been, these have been done over the years and there hasn't been a real look at that. But we'd like to make them look more professional. So that is another piece that we will work on for that. So that, unless somebody has questions about it, that's, that's what I wanted to do with the policies today.
Unless there are additions to them, aren't these the same policies we were all given at the August meeting?
They should be, yes.
So we need to distribute them immediately.
Do you, did we give them everything? I'm trying to remember. I have the only.
Not the, I mean, not the, sorry, not the electronic meeting one, which is not very long anyway, and just approved.
But I think we've got, I think we have, these are the ones we got. Personnel, financial, library policies. And then we have a lot of, I'd like the collection policy, the.
I can review it. I have a notebook, too, that I can review. A copy of it.
Okay, good.
I just want to make sure that we're all, between now and the next meeting, looking at the same group of policies. So perhaps if you were to send out an electronic version of all the policies to all of us all at once, just to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing, the same group.
Could I make a comment? So I noticed that the policies that were handed out, kind of the overarching policies at our August meeting, they actually end with, at least mine did, with XII or what is that, Roman numeral 12? And the reason I noticed this is because when I went to look for the change in policy, it wasn't actually in my printed copy. So I, I think that something got lost in this one.
Can we just look at that policy to see if it's all there in the printed one?
That, that may be part of the, sort of the formatting question that has already been identified. Things changed. They haven't, they haven't been, policies have changed over time, but we haven't kind of recodified it to match. I mean, the, the electronic meeting one, to note, one that is recent, doesn't really, doesn't really fit into the organization as it is. I mean, not necessarily, you know, problematic. It just hasn't been done. So, you know, we have, we have some of those things to do. But yeah, be glad to take a look at that.
And is the goal to remove the procedure section like we just did with the library card?
I think generally, that is, that is our take on it at this point in time.
Okay.
So one more question. So when might you be able to get those to us?
The electronic copy?
The electronic copy, so that we have, hopefully, a couple of weeks to really.
I mean, I, I would say that as of today, I would probably point you to the webpage where they all are. Unless you really want me to send you.
Everything, so it's just the same?
Multiple PDFs.
Yeah.
But I believe that everything has been posted.
Yeah, there's no need to make extra work, so that's fine.
But I'm, I'm happy to do the link if that's just helpful.
Yeah, I think I got it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions about policies? We've got a lot of reading ahead of us. And I wouldn't say it's the most stimulating, but. Okay, the next thing on new business is the initiation of long-term planning. And what I would like for us to do for this is I would like for us to form an ad hoc committee, an extra committee that will, in the next month, will meet and form a project plan for how we move forward to build a five-year plan. What are the parts and pieces that need to be done? What's the timeline that needs to be in that? And bring that project plan back to the full board this next month so that we can then, building a five-year plan is, is not like a, you know, two-month project. This is going to take us a while, but I want us to have an organized approach to it. So what I would like to do is appoint or get volunteers to serve on an ad hoc committee for the next, at least the next month, to build this project, project plan, so that we can have a plan on how we're going to move forward on, on a five-year plan. Yes?
I have a question. Are you looking basically for outline? Is that what you're?
For what?
Outline?
It's not an outline. It's an actual plan of saying that on, you know, by March or maybe by, by May 1, we will have had, we will have solicited comments from the public. And because by May 1, we've done that, then by June 31st, June 30th, we can do this next piece. In other words, it's, it's a plan that not only is the items that we will do, but it's the timeline on how we will do them and how, you know, if one piece doesn't get done here, it's going to impact something here. So it's a, it's an actual plan that we're going to build.
You're asking for a lot in a month.
And I think we can pull this.
So we're going to review all the policies and we're going to develop that plan in the next month?
In a month.
No, it's a.
And do our day jobs.
The plan is for this ad hoc committee. It's not for the full board to do.
I imagine there are board members that are going to be on that who are also reviewing policies.
So, yeah. It is, it is a lot of work. But these are some of the things that we have not worked on in a while and need to be done, so.
In, in, I'm sorry. Tom, doesn't staff develop long-term plans for the future of the library?
I mean, we, we typically are making, taking the actions
in their staff front.
At, at the, at the board's direction with things. I, I do think you have a lot of kind of compression here. I mean, even February being a shorter month doesn't give you so much time. Just that we keep, keep things realistic.
Maybe what we could do then is say that this committee comes back at the March meeting and with a plan for us to move forward. Again, they're not, again, building a project plan is very different from conducting the project.
Yeah.
You know, actually coming up with your five-year plan. This is saying, these are the parts and pieces that will be in the, in a five-year plan. And this is the timeline when each of these pieces will be addressed. And that, again, it is, from project management, from back in my project management days, you build your project plan first. So you know.
Yeah, in my project management days, you build outline first.
So, well, the timeline is the project plan, so. Okay.
What action do we need to take right now?
What we need to do right now is we need to go ahead and form that ad hoc committee. And I think you're right. I think we ought to push it out till March, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that makes good sense. And we will, we'll need to probably have one or two staff members and you, Tom, on the, on that ad hoc committee so we know what we're, you know, how we're moving forward with it.
Appreciate that. Yeah.
All right, is there anybody that wants to jump up and volunteer to be part of that committee? Don't see.
I will.
Okay, okay. And I definitely will be on it, so.
You'll be chair.
Yeah. And obviously, Tom. And then, Tom, if you'll, you don't have to do it today, but identify one or two staff members that you would like to have be part of that. And.
Well, I mean, excuse me, Madam Chairman, I could possibly be part of that committee, but I have a lot of people I take care of with doctor's appointments. I will have a lot of doctor's appointments in that period. I would not know till maybe March if I have access time to do it. So I would defer my decision. I do not know today if I, if I'd be able to put the time in it. You would be sending emails and saying. I have an appointment that, that I have a requirement that they say.
As long as it's pushed back to March, I'll, I'd be happy to defer that.
But my formal skill level would fit that.
Okay.
But I can't commit today.
Okay, I think that's probably a good-sized committee. We don't want to get it to the full board. That's not the purpose of this, so. All right, so I have on the list Bob, me, Tom, Barbara, Joe, and then at least one to two staff members who would be on that committee. All right, are there any other comments about long-term planning? We have to have a jumping off place, and I think this is a start for us. Okay, in that case, are there any other items that need to come before the board before we adjourn? If not, our next meeting will be February 28th. And Tom has changed the location to the Ashland Branch Library, and that'll be at 10:00 a.m., so. All right, do, do I need a motion to adjourn? Or you want to do by consensus? Would somebody like to?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. And a second? Okay, Barbara seconded it. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all.
We almost hit two hours. Good job.
Good, good.